First 100 days, and although there are no grades given here, there is a checklist of six major areas including public safety, community involvement, preserving neighborhoods, and fiscal accountability. Rue has been so active, all six areas are checked off.
He strikes me as that kind of person who wants to improve things.
The first 100 days, what grade would you give him?
I'm not prepared for that, I don't know.
Rue, on the other hand, appears very prepared to tackle the big issues. Among them fiscal responsibility and regaining the public's trust in government. Rue has become one of the first L.A. council members to open up his books to the public.
In my discretionary funds, I made a pledge and a commitment to share with everyone what's there, how much is there, what it's being used for, but more importantly, to go above and beyond and get community input on how those funds should be spent.
He's in charge of a large area, a lot of different communities.
Rue's Council 4 district covers places from Sherman Oaks to Hollywood to Miracle Mile and Hancock Park. It's a diverse district with a lot of different needs.
The overwhelming, non-Asian 4th Council District, last May, decided to elect our first Korean-American city council member ever.
Being a community advocate was what everybody was looking for, and I resonate in my message and what I was trying to accomplish resonated with the voters, and I believe they voted for me because I was the most qualified to deliver and not based on my ethnicity.
Rue, a veteran of county government, has done a lot of work with the homeless and with mental health, another of his core issues.
Mental health is a big, big component of the homelessness problem, and so I look forward to borrowing David's expertise in that regard in fashioning solutions.
But whatever he chooses to work on next, Rue has already proven he wants to change city government and make it more people-friendly and livable for all residents. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
By the way, that anti-mansionization ordinance for Sherman Oaks will be voted on in City Council this month, and stay tuned for the second part of the special report as we find out Rue's plans for guiding L.A.'s future. While earthquake upgrades are expected to cause a shakeup at L.A. high-rises and apartment buildings, as Gil Reyes reports, city leaders approved sweeping seismic retrofits in preparation for the big one.
It's the largest earthquake retrofit plan in U.S. history. Some 15,000 L.A.-area buildings slated for upgrades, the mayor's signature makes it official.
Will we be prepared? I think the answer is going to be a resounding yes.
It's going to make such a huge, incredible difference.
Dr. Lucy Jones, the city's official earthquake advisor, thanks elected leaders for making the deal. Around 1,000 concrete buildings dotting L.A.'s major boulevards will undergo mandatory seismic retrofits. Owners have 25 years to comply. In addition, more than 13,000 wood frame structures face a seven-year deadline for compliance. Wood frame or soft story buildings typically have weak supports, garages, and housing units stacked on top. Prime example, the Northridge Meadow Apartments, which collapsed in the '94 quake, killing 16 people. Officials are focused on preventing similar tragedies.
We need to make sure that every aspect that we can predict, that we take care of, and that we do the work in advance so that we don't have the disaster, the scale that we might otherwise have.
We cannot afford complacency. Complacency risks lives, complacency risks our neighbors, complacency risks our economy, and we refuse to be complacent.
But still being debated, who will pay for these upgrades? The city's Housing Department recommending a 50-50 split between property owners and tenants. Local leaders are weighing their options. In Van Nuys, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
The L.A. Department of Building and Safety will start issuing courtesy letters to apartment building owners in a few weeks. While state tax credits adopted last year to stop runaway production have already created thousands of jobs, Anita Bennett takes a look at how the City of Los Angeles and local families are benefiting.
As production workers start their day at Fox Studios in West L.A., Mayor Eric Garcetti is visiting the lot to explain how expanded tax credits for film and TV productions have been a boon for local workers and the state economy.
So far, between the film and the television, we're at $1.05 billion of productions that wouldn't be here in the first year, the first two rounds, not even a year.
Among the shows taking advantage of those tax credits, American Horror Story Hotel, the FX series previously filmed in Louisiana, but now it shoots here on Stage 16. At a news conference on the show's set, a Fox executive said in just a few months, this one series has pumped millions of dollars into the local economy.
A one-hour drama like American Horror Story is a high economic impact production, and it's a job and revenue creator and generator. The particular production alone will spend, as you said, $55 million, and probably more, and that's over a seven-month period of time.
American Horror Story Hotel employs more than 200 production workers, and state leaders say by keeping those workers here, well, their families are benefiting as well.
Our focus was to bring jobs back to California. Our focus was reuniting families that were split because the breadwinner in the film industry and the TV industry had to go to other states and work many months on out, in some cases, nine months, 10 months, 12 months.
So far, 22 projects have qualified for the expanded tax credits, and according to Mayor Garcetti, American Horror Story Hotel is a prime example of the program's success. In West Los Angeles, I'm Anita Bennett for L.A. this week.
Other shows that have qualified for the tax credits include Twin Peaks and the political comedy Veep, which recently relocated its production from Maryland to Los Angeles. And local TV production isn't the only industry boosting our local economy. Other business leaders in the city showed us their blueprint for a more robust L.A. economy during the annual Access L.A. City Hall event. Anna Marcos has more.
200 business leaders have taken over the reins at City Hall for a day, setting the agenda for a more business-friendly city at this Access L.A. City Hall event. One thing both sides agree on, they want to get business booming in the City of Angels and create more jobs.
It's incumbent upon us now to see what industries are growing and get them here.
We're going to encourage the members of the City Council to make jobs and helping existing businesses and attracting new businesses. We want that to be the number-one priority.
Business leaders are also pushing for continued investment in L.A. acts in the Port of Los Angeles. Educating the workforce of the future, creating more housing, and ending homelessness are also tops on the list, as is reducing L.A.'s gross receipts tax. L.A. has lowered the tax by 16%, but many feel it's not enough.
The City of Los Angeles has some of the highest gross receipts taxes in the region, and it discourages investments in Los Angeles.
We badly need to see that gross receipts tax either reduced to the lowest level or completely eliminated to stay competitive.
Garcetti says since he came into office, the city has grown by 86,000 jobs, while unemployment has dropped by 3%. TV and film production are up, and L.A. County now has the highest number of high-tech companies in the nation. But there's still a lot more to do.
A lot of the times, it's the big businesses who stay in business, and the smaller businesses don't have an opportunity to grow, and I'd like to see a change in that.
bureaucracy. We really need to break down the walls of City Hall and make it easier to do business.
It used to take a year and a half to open the average restaurant. Now it takes about half that, which is great that we've improved, but there are some other cities that do in less than three months.
And there is still uncertainty for many businesses over the city's new minimum wage hike set to start next summer.
There will be some segments in the service and industry sector that may not be able to have as many employees or not have them work as many hours, so time will tell.
And time will tell whether L.A. can find the right balance between job growth and a healthy working climate for both businesses and their workers. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
City Controller Ron Galperin and his office are now developing a website that will provide regular updates and details on L.A.'s economy. While President Barack Obama has declared October National Energy Action Month as his staff releases a new report on climate change and our energy needs, Anna Marcos has more on L.A.'s response, a resilient solar pilot project which could mean the difference between life or death during big weather emergencies.
Recent weather disasters have some thinking the Armageddon of climate change is upon us. Fires in Northern California that raged for almost a month, killer flash floods in Utah, more floods that left South Carolina underwater, and it's not over. Some say L.A. is about to get walloped by Godzilla.
It's getting scary, and here in Los Angeles, after years of crippling drought, we're expecting an El Nino that's been nicknamed Godzilla for how bad we expected. The days of safe, predictable, reliable weather are past. We're moving into an uncertain future where we need to be ready for anything.
And city leaders are getting weather-ready. They're starting with the energy we rely on, their latest weapon against weather mayhem, the Resilient Solar Pilot Project.
That means when the power goes out and conventional solar systems shut down, these resilient solar systems can keep going.
Soon, one of L.A.'s fire stations will try out the new Resilient Solar Pilot System, which will provide crucial solar power without having to rely on the electrical grid if power goes out during a weather disaster.
Think about if we lose power and we get a call. In the middle of the night, we're not going to have any lights. We're going to have to figure out how to open these doors, and if we have to refuel our rig, we can't do it because we don't have power.
U.S. Department of Energy Secretary Ralph Moniz joined city leaders to stress the importance of bringing our energy systems into the 21st century.
We have often an aging infrastructure. We have an inadequate infrastructure in many parts of the country.
But in L.A., energy production, especially in times of disaster, is about to take a leap into the future. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
Now, the Obama administration has released a report called Climate Change and the U.S. Energy Sector. It provides a blueprint for what we must do to prepare for climate change and our changing energy needs. And California is taking bold action to address our changing climate and energy needs as a landmark climate bill is signed into law. L.A. Mayor Eric Garcetti expands on his Save the Drop campaign, and a new sidewalk improves safety at his senior center. All these stories in City Beat. Mayor Eric Garcetti launched the second phase of the Save the Drop Water Conservation Campaign, urging Angelenos to capture the drop should an expected El Nino deliver heavier-than-usual rainfall in the coming months. It's estimated that an El Nino winter will produce billions of gallons of stormwater runoff. The new phase includes an expanded Save the Drop L.A. website, featuring a calculator for Angelenos to measure their water usage, additional tips, and rebate information. The mayor said that L.A. is leading the way in water conservation, and a big part is taking advantage of every opportunity to save water. Mayor Garcetti also joined government, business, environmental, and community leaders at the Griffith Observatory as Governor Jerry Brown signed into law Senate Bill 350. Considered landmark legislation, SB 350 bolsters California's commitment to energy efficiency and renewable energy. SB 350 requires the state to generate half of its electricity from renewable energy sources and double energy efficiency in all buildings by 2030.
With SB 350, California is building on an incredible legacy of being environmental leaders, not waiting for action but taking action.
A brand-new sidewalk now welcomes community members to the Lincoln Heights Senior Center. Councilmember Gil Sadio recently unveiled a new and improved sidewalk. The repairs came after community members complained that the buckled sidewalk and cracks in the cement were dangerous and prevented safe access to the center.
They fixed it pretty good so we can come in and out.
People who come with walkers or canes, wheelchairs, can now come and access the services and the resources of this senior center as well as any other person.
L.A. Mayor Eric Garcetti's game plan to tackle illegal dumping includes a dedicated group of civic-minded volunteers. As Gil Reyes reports, enforcement is expected to be very local.
Organizing events like community cleanups, L.A.'s neighborhood councils are as local as you can get in improving streets and shaping policies. Members know the problems in their neighborhoods because they live and work there every day.
Members and committee members need to know about ethics, about how to lobby if you're working with the city.
At their yearly Congress of Neighborhood Councils at City Hall, L.A. Mayor Eric Garcetti introduces a way to battle the problem of illegal dumping. His Clean Streets Plan calls for each neighborhood council to assign block captains. They'll be in charge of spotting and reporting problems, one captain for every city block.
To be able to be vigilant and just take on a small chunk of the territory you represent, report illegal dumping or bulky items to our strike team, and then we're also asking you to participate in at least three cleanups a year, which is nothing. Every four months, come out one afternoon, one morning, and help us clean up.
The initiative, patterned after Garcetti's graffiti removal program, which he launched as a councilman, Garcetti says block captains help reduce tagging in parts of his former district by 80%. Along with block captains, Garcetti also wants team captains in every neighborhood.
Team captains will be the eyes and ears on the ground, organizing some of those cleanups, making sure that sidewalks in the area remain clear, and recruiting other members of the Clean Streets team so we can build those numbers up and up and up.
A problem the mayor and all 95 volunteer neighborhood councils could soon be tackling block by city block. At City Hall, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
The mayor says illegal dumping happens all over the city, with the highest pockets traditionally in south and northeast Los Angeles. Well, the Metro Expo La Brea rail station was renamed in honor of the late Ethel Bradley, former L.A. mayor Tom Bradley's wife and the city's longest-reigning first lady. She was credited with inspiring Black women to improve their social, educational, and economic status. That's the focus of this week in tweets. L.A. County Supervisor Mark Ridley Thomas, who was in attendance, tweeted, "I'm honored to dedicate Expo La Brea at Metro Los Angeles Station to Ethel Bradley, a woman of exquisite style and grace." Ridley's communication deputy posted Supervisor Thomas with Phyllis and Ethel Bradley at the Metro Los Angeles Station, named after their mother. In another post, she tweeted, "Phyllis and Lorraine expressed gratitude for Metro Los Angeles dedication of Ethel Bradley Expo La Brea Station." And the mayor's office wrote, "Honored L.A. history dedicated in Expo La Brea Station in the name of our city's longest-serving first lady, Ethel Bradley." And that's a look at this week in tweets. While experts on L.A. history know all about the famous Pobladores, who founded Los Angeles in 1781, but as Gil Reyes reports, their little-known descendants lace up their sneakers every year to carry on a proud tradition on the city's birthday.
With beating drums and colorful costumes, descendants of the city's founding fathers make the traditional nine-mile journey every year, just as their ancestors did 234 years ago.
You look around, there's buildings, but if you could just take a moment and reflect that it wasn't here and it was very important to them, and they started their lives to make Los Angeles what it is today, and we don't want to be forgotten.
Jerry Anopa Garcia says she's a descendant of the Quintero family, one of the 11 founding families of the City of Los Angeles. In 1781, this group of Pobladores walked from the San Gabriel Mission to what's now known as downtown's Alvera Street. Here, they established El Puebla de nuestra señora la reina de los ángeles, or Los Angeles. This walk, a recreation of that original journey.
This event has always been a great opportunity to honor Los Angeles' original founders and to acknowledge the contributions of generations of people from all cultural and ethnic backgrounds.
Thomas Mendez traces his lineage to another founding family, Los Morenos. He's also related to two soldiers who accompanied the settlers on the original walk.
Which is very unique, and we proved that through our DNA testing as well, and then two military escorts, which was Lugo and Cota.
Stephen DeBoer, also a descendant of the soldiers, brought along his son Benjamin.
We're always teaching him about his family and his history and try and pass it on to the next generation.
In hopes of carrying on a proud tradition every year. On Alvera Street, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
The entire walk takes about three hours. Since 1981, it's taken place every year around the time of the city's birthday. While the L.A. Zoo gets visitors into the Hollywood spirit, get in touch with your artistic side with a drawing event and the dead come alive at the Hollywood Forever Cemetery. All this and this week's Things to Do. It's that time again for ghosts, goblins, and everything spooky. The all-new Boo at the L.A. Zoo offers Halloween fun throughout October. Visitors wandering through the spooky surroundings can expect to unearth shocking facts about animals, superpowers such as heightened senses that help them survive in their environments. Get frightened with a new graveyard safari hail-bale maze stocked with tombstones and silhouette cutouts of skunks, possums, raccoons, and other creatures that inhabit backyards in the dead of the night. There's also a boneyard education station, animal skeletons and skulls. The festivities go on until October 31st. The L.A. Zoo is located at 5333 Zoo Drive. For more information, visit lazoog.org. The Big Dry L.A. is a movement that's part of a worldwide, month-long festival designed to provide opportunities for people of all ages to discover or return to the pleasure of drawing. The fest features events spread across the month, as well as free events every weekend around the city. On Saturday, October 24th, design your own zine. All you need to bring is an idea, a subject that you're passionate about, a story you want to tell, or even just the kind of doodling you enjoy. You'll design a front and back cover for a zine, and while the screens are being prepared, create the content that will go in between them. The fun takes place at 3:00 p.m. at the Pop Hop Books and Print at 5002 York Boulevard in North Highland Park. For more, visit thebigdryla.org. Hollywood Forever Cemetery brings to life the largest Day of the Dead celebration in California during its 16th Annual Dia de los Muertos Festival. The cemetery grounds are covered with art exhibitions, dance rituals, musical performances, children's arts and crafts projects, and food vendors aplenty. You'll see altars to dead created by community artists. You can either watch or participate in the skeleton costume contest. It's sure to be a spectacular display, as always. Join the spooky fun at the Hollywood Forever Cemetery, located at 6,000 Santa Monica Boulevard. For tickets, visit ladayofthedead.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at L.A. this week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Good morning. Today is Wednesday, October 20—shhhhh—October 21st. I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM. All is welcome. Mr. Clerk, we do have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomfield, Bonner, Buscagno, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Carretts, Kirkory, and Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, West, and 10 members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Uh, Buscagno moves. Bloomfield seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Martinez move—uh, moves, correct, seconds, next.
Mr. President, there are recommendations from the Department of Building and Safety to receive and file Recommendations 1H inasmuch as the lien has been paid in full, and 1P inasmuch as the invoice was rescinded by department inspectors.
Okay, so without objection, that'd be the order.
Mr. President, Items 1 and 2 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do we have cards?
Cards on Items 1, sir.
Okay, let's deal with Item 2. Members, okay, no one in the queue on 2—on Item 2. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Items 3 through 27 are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for Items 3 and 12 have been submitted and circulated for council's consideration. Items 7, 9, 10, 11, and 26 should be held on the desk, sir.
Okay, in fact, I just had a note that basically says 7, 8, and 12. So you've—you have some additions again to that?
Yes, sir. Uh, 9, 10, 11, and 26.
Okay, let's hold those items and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
So that brings us where?
And, Mr. President, those ordinances will go over for one week for second consideration unless reconsidered later with 12 members. That brings us to Items 28 through 35. They're items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
Yes, sir, we have cards on 28, 30, 33, and 35.
Let's hold those items, and if there are no specials, let us prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That brings us where?
Uh, Mr. President, that brings council to presentations or items called special.
We'll do 28, held by Mr. Walsh, John Walsh. Please come forward and stick around, Mr. Walsh. I'm gonna try to dispense with a couple of the item—of the items that you've held.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you. Can we send Items 15, 17, and 19 forthwith, please?
Without objection.
Thank you.
Mr. Walsh, 28.
John Walsh, blogging at hollywoodhighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Again, this concerns the street lighting districts. Although we object to people having to pay for the street lighting districts, uh, the businesses and the property owners, however, the street lighting is today night and day. I haven't seen it dressed since 1976. I remember the lights used to go out every couple of months, take a couple of weeks to fix them, and it's scary when your lights go out. That's when the criminals come, when the lights are out. So actually, when the city does a good job, I am the first to congratulate you. And when the city does a poor job, I am the first to excoriate you.
Stay close, Mr. Walsh. Let's, uh, members, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Mr. Walsh, uh, Item 33.
John Walsh, hollywoodhighlands.org. 33, uh, I have no choice but to congratulate you again—for the REAP account. I think Jackie Goldberg was founded this. They don't have REAP in most cities. What this means is, uh, and we—I have people tell me all the time, "Thanks for the information I saw. If there's anything code violation"—these are all code violations. The landlord did not repair the code violations, and in a certain number of days, the city says, "Guess what? You're not getting the rent anymore. Your land—you're tenants are paying the rent to us till you fix the violations." This, as you see, uh, South Wilton Place, North Ricardo Street, North Mason Avenue, and you know, they really fix things awfully fast when they don't get the rent. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Okay, thank you. Stick around. Okay, members, are there no speakers on the queue? Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
We'll now move Mr. Walsh to Item 35.
John Walsh, blogging at hollywoodhighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential. I'm, uh, when I don't see the details, I know you're hiding something. This is Mr. Buscagno and Mr. Bonner. Anytime I see the word amend, I mean you're—I know you're breaking the rules. Amendment means you're breaking the rules for somebody. Uh, Council Action of September 22 regarding the acquisition. Anytime you buy property off someone, I'm suspicious, okay? And this is a pro—anytime it's in Watts, I figure it's racist. And neither of these—these are two white guys involved in the property.
Stay on the subject.
Uh, this is, uh, South Compton Avenue, the acquisition of this property at South Compton Avenue. I have no idea what you're going to do with this property, and, uh, they need another $25,000. You already did the deal. Now, somebody wants another $25,000. Oh, it's just $25,000. Just give it to them, you know, like a mafia deal. Mr. Buscagno, it's a mafia deal. And, uh, and whenever I see the word redevelopment, remember, we crushed redevelopment. It doesn't exist anymore. The tax increment is $6 billion that went to—that we took away from them and gave to the state taxes. Anything that's—these are old redevelopment projects. Money is passing around. No one gives a damn. You're not gonna hear anything about what's going on here. It's just a more of these oofty-goofty deals. What's $25,000? I just want you to go out now, everybody, and look at the state of your street and how $25,000 could repair it instead of going into Mr. Buscagno's friend's pocket.
I know you're off the subject, but don't go anywhere, Mr. Walsh. I'm gonna call you right after this. Let's, uh, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Item 1, Mr. Walsh.
Item 1, again, these are, uh, building and safety, nuisance abatement, code compliance. I want to keep this movement—uh, meeting moving. I'm not interested in using all two minutes. Again, this is another area where you do an excellent job.
June Stinson. Uh, Mr. Fuentes.
Maybe before the testimony begins, can we go ahead and continue Items 1Q and 1S for two weeks, please?
Okay, so without objection.
And, Mr. President, that brings us to November 10 due to the League of Cities recess.
Then if that's okay, then that's the action we'll take.
And I guess there's also a request to continue 1C for two weeks as well, sir.
Okay, then without objection, we'll continue that to the November 10th as well. And I'm looking for June Stinson. Steve Pombida, and it looks like the last name Leonard. Yes, sir, identify yourself.
Good morning, Council. My name is Steve Pombida. I'm here from Hauser &amp; Allison. We represent Deutsche Bank National Trust Company as trustee for mortgage—uh, Morgan Stanley ABS Capital One Trust 2007-HE2. Our client, Deutsche Bank National Trust Company, is trustee is the new title holder on the subject property, and we wanted to address the council with respect to a notice we received about the imposition of fines and liens on the property. We wanted to point out that our client just took title to the property at foreclosure sale on July 29, 2015. The problem has been, however, that we are unable to currently correct code violations at the property as a result of the holdover property—the holdover owners. At this point, we filed a unlawful detainer action that was filed on August 26, 2015. We obtained judgment October 8, 2015. We obtained a writ of possession against the former holdover owners.
You know what? Let me interrupt you. It's ju—it's been brought to my attention—
Yes.
—that this item will be continued for two weeks, which would bring us to November 10th. If you go to my left, you'll see a young lady waving at you. Have a conversation with her, and then maybe within the two weeks, some of your concerns could be remedied.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks for coming down. Okay, do I have a—the last name is Leonard, and it's a Ninth Avenue property. Are you—yes. I couldn't quite make out the first name. I'll leave that to you.
Good morning. I'm Leonard Annaberry. I received this correction on, um, on my property, and, um, this was from a tenant that I was, uh, that I evicted back in 2006. I wasn't aware that there's any code violation or received anything in the mail. Whatever is the citation, it has been corrected. And what I'm asking the council today is, uh, web the fine or give me an extension to take care of the bill.
Mr. Leonard, why don't we do this? I will continue this item until November 13th, which will afford you the opportunity to—to have a conversation with the city folk to see if you can't, uh, work this out. Is that acceptable to you?
That's fair enough.
Okay, then, uh, that will be the order on that item. I still do not see, uh, I'm calling for June Stinson. You can sit out—June Stinson? Okay, let's, uh, prepare members to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
We're on Item 30, Sean Murphy. Sean, where are you? Come forward, sir.
Yes, good morning. Sean Murphy, Item 30 is a street lighting item. We need the streetlights. We need more streetlights to be fixed. Half of them are—most—some of them are burned out most of the time. That's about it.
Thank you, Sean. Let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, we are at 12. You want to reconsider those items?
Yes, sir. The orders for reconsideration would be Items 3, 4, 6, 29, 31, and 32.
Okay, let's—this vote on reconsideration first, correct?
Yes, sir.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Let's now vote on the actual items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
And, Mr. President, there is a request to send Item 6 forthwith, sir.
Without objection, that'd be the order. I want to defer to the city attorney on Item 12. Mr. Rue, are you ready? Two seconds. Yes.
Yes, Mr. President. Our office recommends that Condition 17 on this item, the second sentence of Condition 17, be deleted.
Okay, then, um... So we—I make a motion to amend this, and I need a second. Mr. Price, let us, uh, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
At this point in time, now I'd like to defer to the great councilman of the 4th District, Mr. David Rue. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning today. Today's a very special day. We recognize Disability Mentoring Day in the City of Los Angeles. Since the passage of the Americans with Disabilities Act, more than 1 million people with disabilities have joined the American workforce. Job seekers with disabilities, regardless of age, are striving to attain economic independence through gainful employment. A new generation of young people with disabilities are growing up in Los Angeles, graduating from high school, going to college, and preparing to contribute to the betterment of their communities. Both students and job seekers with disabilities have the right to maximize their potential by making the most of their intellect, talent, and abilities. Disability Mentoring Day provides an opportunity for students and job seekers of all types of—the—with all types of disabilities to gain insight into career options by spending part of their day in the workforce, shadowing an employee as he or she goes through the day. Most importantly, I would like to recognize the enormous potential of all the individuals with disability, many who are here with us today.
Give him a round of applause.
Round of applause, yeah. And thank all their mentors for making today possible. Lastly, I'd like to acknowledge Molina—I'd like to acknowledge Molina Healthcare and LA Care for supporting and making today successful. Thank you. And to talk about mentoring Disability Day and how to mentor, I'd like to bring up the regional coordinator for Disability Mentoring Day, Adriana Miranda.
Welcome, Ms. Miranda.
Thank you. It is an honor to be here this morning. Thank you so much for your contribution. Each and every one of you and your staff has been wonderful, and I would like to take this opportunity not just to tell you a little bit about Disability Mentoring Day, but to acknowledge the various city departments that always, every year, year after year, contribute to this effort. I'd like to acknowledge the Departments of Cultural Affairs, Port of Los Angeles— I'd like to acknowledge the Departments of Cultural Affairs, Port of Los Angeles, Public Library, and LADWP for their in-kind contributions. And all of the volunteers that you see here, we could not do it without you. But more than anything, let me tell you a little bit about Disability Mentoring Day. This is a program that began in the White House about 15 years ago when the president asked a couple of dozen students from the local universities in the Washington DC area to come to the White House and be matched with professionals in the same field of their choice. This program grew to over 20,000 students around the world in over 20 countries, and we are honored to be the regional coordinators for all of the Los Angeles area. We need more mentors. This morning, you are looking at 102 students and job seekers with disabilities who are coming to spend the day with a city mentor. This year, we opened it to the private sector, so I'm happy to tell you that we have representatives from the local colleges, from different organizations, including works or centers and nonprofit organizations around the civic area. We need more city mentors. If you want to learn more about this program, please visit our website at disability.lacity.org. We thank all our mentors here today. And most especially, I'd like to thank Catalina Morgan, who's been my right hand during the last few months with the program, and all our volunteers, some of whom came from as far as Lancaster to be with us today, took their day off to help us today. Thank you so very much. We hope to hear from you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And with that, remember, don't forget the website, disability.lacity.org, if you want to sign up to mentor and participate next year. So on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, I'd like to present to Adriano for Disability Mentoring Day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, there are, what, about three items that we could take up right now?
Yes, sir. Seven, nine, and 11. The committee reports have been submitted and have been circulated.
Can we take them all up together or individually?
Together, sir.
Okay, so if you'd repeat those items again?
Those are items seven, nine, and 11.
Okay, so on these items, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, so what we're going to do now is we're waiting on a few reports. So I'm going to ask Sean Murphy to come forward for general public comment. Mr. Walsh. And Mr. Baldwin, please come forward. Mr. Murphy, the floor is yours.
Yeah, okay. Good morning, sir. We need to keep the storm drains cleaned, the gutters cleaned, because the rain's going to come soon. Like to say to my councilmen, when Starbucks opened on the corner of Burbank and Lower Canyon in a few weeks or so, I like it, I like it to become, that working, live and work in the area to get served first. First come, first served. If you can do that, Mr. Krikorian, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Mr. Walsh, general public comment.
JohnWashHollywoodHighlands.org, if you didn't know, 60 minutes ago, Biden dropped out. He punked out. He's not running. This is when we formed, right now, Citizens for Jerry Brown. Jerry Brown, we ask you, you must run against Hillary. Three times is the charm. We're putting it on the internet. We want hundreds of, thousands of, millions of people. You must save us. Bernie Sanders cannot win. He's a socialist. We do not want eight years of Hillary. Biden didn't have the guts. Jerry Brown, you must become our president. We are behind you. This time, you will win. You lost the last time. This is three times the charm. You can come, and our group is called Citizens for Jerry Brown. We are organizing, starting an hour ago, all over the United States. So everyone realizes that our next president of the United States will be California Governor Jerry Brown. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you. If I could get Mr. Baldwin, Ms. Ramirez, Ms. Ramirez, and Brian Barajas. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Omar Baldwin. I'm founder and CEO of Peace Please, nonprofit organization. Peace Please promotes peace through archway events, activities, film, and music. And today, we're here today to, to just be like here because, because the time for peace is now. We're, we have a Democratic Socialist running for president. We have Hillary Clinton running for president. And, I mean, we got a lot of stuff to handle overseas. We got so much to do as Americans, and we need to use everybody. Like, if we have an army, right, and we have infantry, and we have tanks, and we have jets, we just don't want the infantry and the tanks to go out. We want to get the jets to go out too. So, I mean, Peace Please Incorporated is a jet. So let's get the jets to go out and promote peace. And we're continuing to collaborate with everybody, as many people as we can, with citizens, with different organizations, and different city governments. And peace, please. Peace, please. Please, peace, please.
Thank you. Ms. Ramirez, followed by Mr. Barajas.
Thank you. This is a matter of principle. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a serious problem at the Music Center Grand Park. Again, the Music Center Grand Park. Please, when you go into the bathrooms, watch out for your items, especially in the females' bathrooms. Many of the Latinas and gangbangers and wetbacks go in and take and steal things from people in the bathrooms and underneath the stalls when you're washing your hands. Be careful. Another thing, they come in at 5:30 in the morning when they open, and they take out the spindles, the spools, and they trash up the entire place early in the morning. Again, we're out of paper, toilet paper, and seat covers by 10 o'clock in the morning. Something else that I'm also wanting to address, there are wonderful, wonderful security team. One of them is Chris Williams, excuse me, Chris Ramos, Mario Hernandez, James London, and several others. You've got the best group of security people. And the Music Center people are harassing this wonderful outfit of security people. Again, if you see these security individuals, they are phenomenal. Thank you.
Thank you.
God bless Donald Trump.
Thank you. Mr. Barajas.
Well, let me just say that on our website, larouchepack.com, we have a article by Lyndon LaRouche, a presidential policy statement from Lyndon LaRouche. Now, I think that the qualities that we must face as a citizenry is, how do we identify a good candidate for president? The citizens have to know what that is. Obviously, the green movement, or anybody that believes in man-made climate change, is a satanic evil bastard like Jerry Brown and anybody else who supports the Queen, Queen Elizabeth's ideology of greenisms or whatever, Mother Gaia worship. So anyways, we, the LaRouche Pack, are spearheading right now, talking with senators and congressmen in Washington DC to throw Obama out for his murders with the drone program, and Glass Steagall.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Clerk, I think you told me item 26 is ready? Or has been circulated or no?
I believe we're waiting for it to be circulated, sir.
Okay, at this point in time, members, members, if you have any announcements to make, we're going to do that now. This will be the announcement part of our council day. Any announcements, events? Mr. Buscagno.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, in San Pedro, in celebration, continuing our celebration of the Italian Heritage Month, we are going to be screening an important film about the Watts Towers. Everyone's invited, the Warner, the Warner Annex screening of I Built the Tower from 6 to 8. It's free to the public. We've been promoting this event, Mr. President, on all our social media networks. The entire city's invited, again, the Grand Annex on Sixth Street in downtown San Pedro, an amazing field called I Built the Tower in honor of Sabato Rodeo, who built the Watts Towers, connecting our neighborhoods, and hoping everyone can join us. Everyone's invited, and it's free to the public. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Buscagno. Mr. Marquise Harris Dawson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to request that we reconsider item 1L and continue it for two weeks to November 4.
Okay, item 1L. Let's vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, and that is to be continued until when, Mr.? I don't know.
Mr. President, council's in recess due to League of Cities. On the 4th, would November 10 is the next available date?
Okay, now, again, any other announcements? Okay, let's go to, it's my understanding, Mr. Clerk, that item 10 is ready?
Yes, sir. Item 10 has been circulated.
Okay, let us prepare to vote on item 10, members. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item 26 is before us, and it's my understanding we'll be moving the committee report on this as the personnel or the PAU committee on this. Let us open the roll. Roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, Mr. Rue, it's my understanding, where it relates to item 8, or I'll let you explain, or you want to continue item 8 for one week? Mr. Clerk, the request has been made to continue item 8 for a week. That would bring us to October 28, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so without objection, that's what we'll do. Do we have any other items before this council? Any other?
Counsel has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, consider them, Mr. Corretts?
Could we ask that item 26 go forthwith?
Without objection, that'd be the order. I have one, Mr. Krikorian?
Mr. President, I'd like to ask that item 1R be reconsidered for purposes of a continuance.
And you want to continue it how long?
Two weeks, please.
Okay, so item 1?
R.
Okay, let's vote on reconsideration, I would imagine. Then we'll continue 1R for two weeks. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And, Mr. Clerk, we will continue that item until what date?
November 10, sir.
November 10. Okay, I have one more public comment card. Mr. Marine, general public comment.
Yes, as you know, Steve Cooley proved that public officials and union officials, they use public employee funds without their permission is illegal. And that money has to be repaid. And it is no longer prudent nor kosher for the educated descendants of Gentiles and Jews to publicly use the fruits of a labor, put their hands on the daily bread, the showing ongoing MOUs, and fail to return it, turn it over to our state-approved public benefit fund administrators. Now, you're supposed to know that. And any money sheltered from the pay of public employees is not a damn discount like Mr. Walsh has been telling y'all. It's called deferred comp. And any money that's not going into a deferred comp account or a defined benefit account is being held by union and city officials illegally.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time has expired. Okay, again, Mr. Clerk, that brings us where? Oh, I don't have you. Come forward and just identify yourself. Maybe I misplaced it.
Thank you. I'm Patricia McAllister, and I want to make a comment on 25 and 26 about the homeless. We need to do something about these homeless shelters. They're taking people's money. Some of the women have to have sex with the staff. Some of them are taking people's entire GR. How are you going to get on your feet if they're taking your money? We need to do something with these shelters. We need to build some affordable housing. We need you politicians to show up for these chamber meetings. And we need all of this racketeering to stop and to help the people. Now, I'm going to be an advocate. We've got four blocks from here, black people laying in boxes, homeless, and you sit up in here and going fund Hollywood, areas that have money, call them impoverished neighborhoods. Get those black people off the street. And I'm going to point, I'm very apologetic to say this, but to the black members here. You sit up here and, 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 and don't do nothing for your people. Get those black people off of Skid Row before you do any darn thing around here. Those are my people. And Wesson, and you, Price, and the rest of you black people, do your job and quit licking up to these white folks, because as soon as these Hispanics take over, you're going to be out of a job anyway.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes general public comment. And, Mr. Clerk, that brings us to what, posting?
Yes, sir. Counsel has motions for posting and referral.
Let's consider them posted and referred. Mr. Price?
Move item 9 forthwith.
Okay, item 9 forthwith. Okay, any more announcements? If everyone could please rise? Everyone, please rise in the council chambers. Adjourning motions? I'm going to look to my left side, Mr. Harris Dawson's side. Anyone on Mr. Harris Dawson's or Mr. Bloomingfield's side? No, I'm now looking to Mr. Weesar, to Mr. Rue. Any adjourning motions to my right? I do not see any members. This meeting is adjourned.
We now join our scheduled program in progress.